I like to use the gavel, as you know. And we have a small crowd, small crowd of insiders, so, and we have a fairly light agenda, so let's get this show on the road. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 8th, 2018, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Bowman, Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Ms. McTiernan.
Here.
Ms. Ogden.
Here.
President and I do.
Thank you, and so for our Pledge of Allegiance, we have our new, our brand-new deputy clerk here, Nicole Sarna. Welcome, and we'd love it if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised, the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV, Comcast 36, and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional contact purposes, please turn her off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and closed session of July, was it 10th?
10th.
10th.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So on to the reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to start with reminding everyone that National Night Out Against Crime will be held on Tuesday, August 7th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on the Village Green. This features a variety of state, federal, county, and municipal-level agencies and individuals to display, to view displays from the Union County SWAT, the New Jersey State Police, the FBI, K-9, along with our Summit Police, Fire, EMS, and Public Works. As always, National Night Out will feature a Dunka Cop tank to benefit two Westfield residents who are six-year-old identical twins with global developmental delay and nonverbal autism, and that requires daily, year-round intensive therapeutic interventions. Food trucks, bounce houses, and other amusements will open at 6:00, followed by the annual blessing of the badges at 6:45. The band Luke and the Troublemakers will perform on the main stage at 7:00. Free hot dogs will be provided by the Summit PAL. Summit's 2018 National Night Out is sponsored by Overlook Medical Center and the Summit PAL. It's a great night, lots of fun, and lots of people there for the activities. The Summit Family Aquatic Center memberships are changing as of tomorrow, August 1st. We have hot weather, and the Summit Family Aquatic Center is still Summit's hottest place to cool off. Half-price memberships are available beginning tomorrow, and the Aquatic Center will be open daily, weather permitting, through Labor Day. So for more information, please go to summitcommunityprograms.com. I'm happy to announce that we received eight proposals from developers for the Broad Street West redevelopment project, the RFQs. They put them out in June, and the project team that we have so far, the steering committee, is very happy with this response, and we're optimistic that there will be a developer we can work with to achieve the goals that we have established with considerable community input. The next step is to evaluate the proposals, and I will continue to provide updates as we move forward in this process. The Summit Free Market Building, well, the Summit Free Market is a very popular seasonal initiative, and it's one step closer to having a permanent home. The construction office approved the building permit, and construction could begin as early as September. The Summit Conservancy continues to raise money to help finance construction costs. Please go to summitconservacy.org to make a tax-deductible contribution or to learn more about the project. And lastly, the Summit Police Youth Academy is in session last week and this current week. Last Friday, I had the pleasure of attending the graduation of Session 1 of the Summit Police Academy. The recruits really did an incredible job handling a crime scene investigation, participating in demonstrations with the Union County Sheriff-K-9 Unit, and the Union County Police Bomb Squad. They also engaged in firearm and motor vehicle stop simulations, as well as daily physical training and marching drills. Congratulations to all the participants. I'm looking forward to attending the graduation this coming Friday. It was terrific. These kids are so enthused, their families are so proud, the officers that are the trainers are really wonderful with them, and there's a big difference between the amount of, the lack of skill and discipline that the kids have on Monday compared to when they're done on Friday. It's really quite something. So I really, I'm proud of these kids to take a week off of their summer to just learn about respect and how things are done in our, with our great police department. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Michael Rogers, our city administrator, is out, so we'll do the council president's remarks. I'm the president pro temp, because the council president is also out. So this is our last common council meeting for the summer. The next council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 4th, at 7:30. Talking about summer events, although tomorrow's first, first day of August, there's still a lot of summer left to enjoy. We have a lot of different wonderful things, as the mayor alluded to, at the pool and other places. The Summit Department of Community Programs has events every Tuesday and Thursday nights on the Village Green. There's live music on Tuesdays and movie night on Thursdays. That's correct, yes. And volunteers. Summit really needs volunteers. Every year, Summit residents volunteer for us, so I think we have some of the best residents around. You really get phenomenal resumes whenever we need volunteers. We have a lot of vacant positions. We need them to be filled. Every board and committee are important. They're all listed on the cityofsummit.org, and volunteer applications are available online and at the Clerk's Office in City Hall. We talk a bit about notifications and about making sure that everyone knows something. And I know I said when I was canvassing for campaign season that even though we pushed stuff out 10 times, people didn't always hear it, or often said they never knew anything about it. So we have notifications. The notifications team would like to remind all the citizens, sign up for general and emergency notifications. You can choose from the list you like, but at least do it from the emergency. We make it a priority to post and share substantial information multiple times a day, so please do that. Okay, so that's it for the reports. Now is the time for public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment about something that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing, seeing no one, we'll move on to, we have no ordinances for hearing. We have no ordinances for introduction, so we'll move on to resolutions. We'll begin with finance personnel. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Councilman Gould. Finance, resolution number one is a resolution certifying the 2017 audit review. This review was very well done and very well received. There were a few minor recommendations, most of which we will talk about more at the September meeting. One, we will address in the next finance resolution, but I want to congratulate Marge Gerber and her team for doing such a great job with the city finances and having such a successful audit review. So I would move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Okay, are there any comments from members of common council? Yes, Councilman McTiernan.
Thank you, council, or council president pro temp, Gould. My question just would be for Marge. I saw, I mean, first off, I echo Councilwoman Little's congratulations. This is a fantastic audit. I know it's a lot of work just to get the audit done, tons of hours spent with the auditors, but, I mean, there's pretty much nothing really in here, so that's fantastic. There, you know, very few municipalities I think could show an audit that's as clean as this audit, so congrats. I just had one question on some of the, a couple of the recommendations. I know we moved a few years ago about electronic depositing of check payroll. Why are there still exceptions to that?
There are too many. The only time we print a payroll check now is on your last check, if you retire or you're leaving, because it gives us better control. But everybody's being paid, are you talking that the accounts pay a bill checks? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I just saw that one of the recommendations was electronic deposit, just to make sure that they're all.
We've been working on that, but just.
Was it proper payroll processing?
Yeah.
Recommendation number four.
Okay, what that was, was the, the judge was in our system as a vendor rather than as an employee, so a check was printed for him for special sessions. That can't happen again because we've corrected that, and he's listed as an employee, and we verified that all of our employees are now listed as employees. That's how that happened.
Oh, perfect.
We weren't, yeah, we weren't even aware that they were paying, that the court was paying through purchase order until the auditors found it, and so we've corrected that.
Because we got our money's worth from the auditor.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other comments from council? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. Yes, it was a great audit. I actually have one question for you, which is, I think I know the answer, but on the audit, there's these two paragraphs that talk about an unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. Are you familiar with that section? And it seemed like there was two paragraphs that were contradictory right next to each other. Was that, is that just definitional at the top?
Yes. That is definition. Oh, it's what the state writes, and it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Right.
We have to follow what their guidelines are. Basically, we can't spend money unless we encumber it first. That's the whole basis of the, and it doesn't matter whether we've gotten the money in. We, as long as we budgeted and we've approved our budget, we can spend it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Strange, it's a strange system.
It is strange. Again, congratulations on a really good audit. Okay, Councilwoman Little. Oh, do we have to vote on this?
We vote on them.
Yes, so let's vote to, apologies for that. So let's vote to.
You don't have to do a roll call.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, motion carries. Okay, next, Councilwoman Little.
Thank you. Finance resolution number two is a bookkeeping matter that came out of the audit review, and it's a resolution to request permission for the dedication by Ryder, and it concerns the Summit Police Department Confidential Fund. And this is just something that came up in the audit, that they are, would like to reclassify this fund, and I move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Okay, any comments from council? Any comments from the public? Any further comments from council? Okay, let's do a roll call on this, not a roll call, a.
Voice vote.
Voice vote on this, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Councilman Gould. Finance resolution number three is to authorize 2018 salaries effective July 1st. If you'll recall, the last meeting, we authorized the majority of the town salaries. However, there were two employees who were not included in the last resolution, so that is what this resolution covers. So I would ask that this resolution be approved.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Any comments from the public? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilwoman Little.
Resolution number four is to appoint deputy city clerk. As the council president pro temp referenced, Nicole Sarna is here, and we are very excited to welcome her as the deputy city clerk. She comes highly recommended, and her start date would be tomorrow, so I, I do enthusiastically move this resolution for approval.
And I enthusiastically second it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do you want to say anything about our potential new?
Nicole comes to us with her registered municipal clerk certification, which is going to help the process tremendously, and she's got plenty of experience in the clerk's office where she comes from, from New Providence, sorry, guys. And I know she'll be a welcome addition to our family at City Hall here, and we welcome you, Nicole.
Thank you, thank you all so much.
Okay, yes, welcome. Welcome. Any comments from council or from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, or any opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, Nicole, welcome aboard. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you. The next three finance and personnel resolutions, number five, six, and seven, I would ask to bundle. These resolutions all concern extensions of sick leave with pay. Resolution number five is for a Division of Public Works employee. Resolution six is also a Division of Public Works employee, and resolution seven is for a Fire Department employee. And these, I am asked, we, these are all discussed in the closed session, and I would ask that we approve these three resolutions extending sick leave with pay for these three employees.
Second.
Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to general services. That would be, yes.
All right, take it away. All right.
Apologies. Councilwoman Ogden, please.
All right, for resolution number one, this is to, this resolution is to authorize submission of Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund 2018 grant application. We applied for this last year and got $50,000, and we are seeking a match of $100,000 from this year from the trust fund open space grant for this project. This is to help with the bocce ball and senior pocket park, mini park, that would really be fantastic. We, I saw a drawing of it and saw where it potentially could go, and so if we were able to get this grant, this matching grant, it would be really exciting. I think it would be just a tremendous asset to the community center. So at this time, I would like to move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Okay, any comments from council? Any comments from the public? Okay, you know, Judith, that I think this is fantastic, and, but, if we get the money, we have to match the money, right? Do we?
Have it.
Councilwoman Little, we have the money in the.
Ogden, but that's okay.
Counsel.
You knew that.
Councilwoman Ogden, we have the money. Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilwoman Ogden, apologies again, please carry on.
Resolution, resolution number two for general services, this is to authorize change order number four for the community center reservation, renovation. Well, as we all know, things don't always go according to plan, and this is during the demolition. An existing steel beam was expected to completely span the opening and was not built as expected, and thanks to Jamie Calucci, who made everything work for us as best we could when we got up there and saw that it wasn't there, which is a huge problem, and that's an unforeseen problem, which we had no idea was going to happen. We were able to get the funds, or the amount to be $6,596, which is available in the account, so I would like to move this change order at this time.
Second.
Okay, any comments from council? Any comments from the public? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Ogden.
All right, this is to authorize the purchase in excess of $17,500 for lot count equipment for the Broad Street Garage and Springfield Avenue tier garages. As we have already in the downtown, this, actually, we're doing, because we already have the hardware in place, this is going to be cheaper for us. I know that sounds funny with that amount, but it will be less expensive bringing in the counters to identify closed lots when they are full, which has been a tremendous asset onto Forest. So at this time, I would like to move and authorize the purchase for lot counter equipment for Broad Street and Springfield Avenue.
Second.
Okay, any comments from council? So does it serve a purpose beyond just showing lot full when it's full? Does it tell you how many spaces are left? Yes, Rita McDaniel, please let us know.
Rita McDaniel, Parking Services Manager. Yes, actually, I'll free up my staff's time, because they go all the way up and do lot counts in both garages and all the lots every single day. We will no longer have to do that. It'll also save any commuter or downtown employee from driving all the way up and then driving all the way down while they're trying to get to train or get to work. So it'll save an enormous amount of time, and it does work on the Forests. You know, they just keep going to the next lot. So it's, that's one of our biggest complaints that we hear, is when the garages are full and people are rushing to work or to the city.
Yeah, and I've noticed, not in this city, because they've worked perfectly, but in other cities, sometimes those, you know, people have said, "Well, I see the lot counter, but I see spaces right in there." Is that user error?
Because people are driving around, they're exiting. Every morning, we check the actual number of vehicles that are in there, so we change the system once, as opposed to sending staff back every hour and a hour in the mornings to determine when the lots are full. Because we get phone calls saying, "I can't find parking, where can we go?"
Right.
So this will definitely save the time. We do have to manually count only one time a day, though, so that'll be a big savings.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman McTiernan.
Thank you, Council President Pro Temp. Just a follow-up for that, Rita. Which, who currently does that? Which part of the organization does that right now?
The parking, well, onto Forest, we have an ambassador that counts the cars and calls it in. Right now, parking enforcement officers do that.
Parking enforcement officers. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions or comments from council members? Any comments from the audience, from the general public? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilwoman Ogden.
Okay, last one for general services. This resolution is to declare two part-time parking enforcement officers. After discussion, as our discussion in closed session and reviewing the data from the past several years, it is clear that the parking services is understaffed due to illness, vacation, military leave. On a good day, we're staffed with possibly two to three employees, and this is inadequate. Enforcement is, is, in order to create turnover, we need to have enforcement, and it's imperative that we do that, and we're lacking. Many times, people are parking all day in a five-hour zone and taking full advantage of our, our lack of enforcement. So at this time, I would like to move the resolution to declare two part-time employees to add to the efficacy of our parking services department. I think with the understanding, to be clear, that this is going to be evaluated in six months, that we put these kiosks into hopefully lower manpower, but that, in order to be effective, we need to increase the part-time enforcement at this time. So I would like to move this.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from members of council? Yes, Councilwoman Little.
I just, I'm definitely in favor of this, and I sit on this committee and also on the S-PAC, and this is one of the things that we hear most about from residents, is about parking, and no one likes enforcement and getting tickets, but really, this is a very key component to increasing turnover and more spaces in our downtown, is to make sure that people are paying attention to the rules and using the spaces the way that they're meant to be spaced, meant to be used. So this is one of the keys to maximizing the amount of people that can be using the spaces in the downtown, increasing turnover, and really taking advantage of the parking that we do have in the downtown and surrounding areas to its maximum potential. So I'm definitely in favor of this, and looking, we've done a lot of evaluation and comparing Summit compared to other municipalities with similar parking lot numbers and space numbers that are monitored, and we are really understaffed compared to those other municipalities, and I think this is definitely something that's needed. So I am enthusiastically in favor of this sort, of this resolution as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman McTiernan.
Thank you, Council, Council President Pro Temp Gould. Yeah, so I appreciate the hard work that the General Services Committee has done on this, and I like the idea that these are part-time employees, and so that will give the city flexibility going forward. I guess, though, I just have a couple of questions around it, and, you know, I see you, they've done a lot of stuff with town surveys and things, and, but one of the things we're seeing, our ticketing average is going, is down due to lack of staffing, and I guess, maybe Rita, you could answer this. You know, given that we've had the same staffing model for a few years now, what's changing on why that is now going down versus where it's been, say, two or three years ago?
Most recently, as I, if you recall, last year and the year before, I've been asking to fill vacancies with the parking enforcement officers that were not approved. So when that happens, I have less staff until I would come back, and then I would get approval, and it takes anywhere from a month to two months to fill and train a new person. So we had a vacancy, it wasn't filled, it was finally filled. Now that person that's been here has gone on military leave, he's going out for another nine months. We also had another vacancy that just expired this year. I just filled that position. So again, we've also taken on more responsibilities for parking enforcement. We are doing all the two-hour zones within the downtown. We are constantly getting phone calls from downtown merchants stating that people are staying too long at the 90-minute meters, and we get calls from residents daily for the two-hour zones that they came to council to have a time limit posted. However, nearby businesses or people, high school students, commuters, they're on these residential streets, and we need officers to go. Some of the time limits are very specific. It could be from 7:30 in the morning to 10:00 a.m. in the morning. And on a Monday, right now, before I hired, I had one officer. They can't go and sit down at streets and then come back and then also do the downtown. So again, we have taken on more responsibility, and we need to properly do all of the lots, garages, street meters, and then also, there's about 86 streets that are time-limited zones in Summit.
So the more responsibilities, though, when has that happened?
That was two years ago.
So two years ago. So when you're saying that our ticket, our ticket numbers are down, you're referring to it relative to two years ago?
Yeah, within the last year and a half, because I had two separate vacancies. And then also, again, I, you know, if someone goes out sick or someone takes vacation, I don't have anyone to fill in the spots.
Right, but the, but the vacancies were open and now they're, they're filled, is what you're saying?
Well, I just had one that was gone for a month on military leave.
Right, no, I get that.
And the other person just started a week ago. So, but also then I have him going out for nine months again, but we still don't have enough officers to do all that we're required to do, even with filling that recent vacancy. It's still not enough to cover all the areas that we're required to cover.
Yeah, so I, so I guess what my, my concern is, look, I completely understand that we need, we don't write tickets to make money at the city, we write tickets to create proper behavior, which is to utilize a scarce asset, which is parking spaces in our downtown, in a correct manner so we can promote turnover, and it's good for our residents, it's good for our businesses. So I get all that, so we need, we need. businesses. So I get all that. So we need, we need to get this right. I just, the worry, when we talk about our, the investments that we're making on this kind of thing, when we, you know, we've had openings, they're filled, I get that we have someone on military leave, God bless him, I thank him for his service, so that we have to fill that type of thing in. But I guess I'm just not getting a sense for that, you know, if our model, if our model is ever actually sort of operated, it sounds to me, over the last couple of years, it's really never, we've never had, you know, the current, the current staff that we've been talking about, which is two full-time and two part-time, that's currently allocated for parking enforcement.
A couple of years ago, we were at four, full-time equivalent.
But that was going back to 2008 or '09. I'm talking over the last, like, four or five years.
Right, but like I said, there's been, with part-time people, there's a lot of turnover. And again, sometimes those vacancies were not filled by council at those times. So again, I would go months at a time without having an officer, and then another one will leave, and then I would be down to two officers. It's a rotating cycle. But also, too, with the additional things that we're required to do and to make sure that, you know, I get calls daily from downtown businesses that are saying, "These cars are sitting here for two hours, three hours, where's enforcement?" And again, we're not getting to all the areas we need to get to, because we're short-staffed.
Well, I, you know, you're the manager of the group, Rita, so I, you know, I take what you say at face value. What we continue to seem to do, though, is we invest in technology that's supposed to make our people more efficient. We just did it three minutes ago, when we just added, spent $30,000. So parking enforcement officers don't have to go to the deck to keep counting cars. These investments should mean that over time, we shouldn't be having to add, continue to add staff. We made that big investment a couple of years ago on license plate reading technology, where we don't have to have people walk around. They can drive around, and, you know, the thing reads the license plate, we can tell how long they've been there. You know, my concern is, and I'm very happy to hear from General Services that they're going to monitor this and see how it works, but, you know, we make these investments, and I just, you know, it's just frustrating, because we're spending a lot of money on these a lot of times. You know, $30,000 is a decent amount of change, and, you know, we don't ever seem to have the efficiencies that go along with it.
Well, with the ALPR, if we didn't have the ALPR, the ticketing would be even lower. So it has sped up the efficiency of being able to ticket faster. But if I don't have the staff to drive the car and monitor all the areas we need to, the ticketing can't be done, and we're not being effective. It has improved. And with sufficient staff, you're going to see even more efficiencies, and we're going to see more. There are a lot of non-resident commuters that come to Summit and park. And, you know, we're trying to save these spaces for customers that come into our downtown, that visit the stores, that work downtown, that are resident commuters. And, you know, we changed Elm Street for a reason, in order to provide parking for residents and downtown employees. We have to enforce it every day. They park there every day, they're not worried about a $25 ticket. It's very essential that we have to hit these certain areas every single day, and I don't have the staff to do it. The ALPR works, and the officers love it. It's just, but I don't have the staff in order to handle the areas. It is an improvement. It's, and I totally appreciate the support of the technology, because it does make things faster. But if I don't have the officers to drive the cars or even walk with a tablet, and we have e-ticketing, it's impossible to do.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Little.
And I just, I would just wanted to reiterate that we've discussed this, we have raised a lot of these same concerns, and we have discussed this at length in the General Services meeting, and Rita's been very amenable to, and that's why we are looking at part-time officers, and we are looking at doing these part-time staffing to try to accomplish our goals. And she's been very amenable to looking back at the staffing and seeing if, you know, there's any possibility of changing it or rearranging the staffing in a six-month to a year timeline. So we are going to be looking at how this technology is affecting the staffing. We just are putting in the kiosks this week. They're all going up, probably people have noticed them around town, the lot full counts we just approved, those will go in end of the summer. The transfer station technology's gone in. So we have some new technologies that we don't fully know what the impact is going to be and how that's going to affect personnel staffing, but we are going to continue to monitor this. We are going to continue to look at this. It's going to be, continue to be a concern for General Services, but right now, we believe that it's very clear that we are understaffed in the enforcement area and that these two officers are really needed. And I think to make it clear to everyone at home, that one, that we are asking for two part-time officers to be approved. One of them is to replace an officer who is going on military leave and will be gone for the next nine months. So it's kind of one extra part-time officer beyond what we have now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Little. Yes, Councilwoman Fox?
I had a question about, about the enforcement that goes on at the transfer station. So there oftentimes are people there with the reader, and I was wondering, are those enforcement officers, are those ambassadors?
That's actually, they're summer temporary help.
Okay.
So they're just hired for that project.
Okay.
And we're hoping to do the live testing by the end of this week or next week, and to hopefully go live within the next two to three weeks, and then no longer be needed there.
And what does live testing mean? Can you explain that?
Well, again, what we have to do is ensure the timeliness of the camera from the reader. There's a loop counter that we installed in the ground, which, once the tires run over it, it signals, it looks up the license plate in the database, turns to light green if they have a permit. So again, there's also those that do not have a permit, alert, we'll go to a staff member at the transfer station. So they have to be trained on the software, so we have to conduct that as well. So we're in the final stages.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome.
I look forward to that. I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, Councilwoman Ogden.
Ask your, I can go after you.
Okay. I think anecdotally, and from what I've heard, I know a lot of people are getting away with a lot. They, I've heard some commuters tell me they never pay at all. And so I look forward to some increased enforcement, just so that we can have more turnover like we spoke about. The, I'm curious about the collection, the collection staff, those are the ones that theoretically we won't need as much after the technology is all in. Could those people then later be, are they full-time employees or are they part-time employees? And could, if they're full-time, could they be shifted over to enforcement?
Right now, once we get these next kiosks in, I will be doing a whole labor study of the collection personnel. And I would like to, if need be, come back to council or closed session to discuss personnel matters. I'd prefer to do that.
Of course, yes.
But, yeah, I wouldn't want to speak of any particular positions. But the goal is to see where we can streamline, and then also, years ago, the collection people did write tickets. But because we went from two full-time to one full-time and a part-time, they weren't able, because I only have a part-time person, and they solely come in three days a week to do collections. So again, I will look at that to see where we can, and if we can cross-train, we certainly will.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Ogden?
No, I was just going to sum up with encouraging, you know, everybody to look at the enforcement changes behavior. And right now, we have got a situation which is, which is not good for Summit. And I think that we really, and again, I would emphasize that we're going to look at this again, and we're going to evaluate how this is working. And when we get the kiosks in the north and the south side all queued up, and everybody's very comfortable, and the transfer station is up and going, and we've got our routes and the streets being monitored, I mean, we reevaluate, and it'll come back into General Services. Believe me, Rita knows, we're asking her the hard questions. So, but there's a definite problem right now, and I think enforcement will change behaviors, and that's what we need to do. So I really hope everyone will support this.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to Public Safety Committee, and I've asked Councilwoman Fox to speak to this.
Thank you, Council President Protam. Safety Resolution 5846, except to donate, is to, the Reeves Foundation has generously offered to donate funds for the purchase of a 2019 Harley-Davidson Police Electroglide FLHTP motorcycle and two helmets with radio systems. And this motorcycle would be used daily by members of the Summit Traffic Unit for traffic enforcement. It would also be used for special occasions such as parades and the National Night Out. I move this resolution to accept this donation. Second.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Any comments from the public? Chief Weck, do you want to say anything about it?
President Protam, to you, I'd like to thank the Reeves Foundation. Anytime the city can get another vehicle, free, is a great asset to the whole city. And a motorcycle is a little different. They won't really be responding to calls, that's still going to be the market patrol unit. But having a motorcycle, let's be honest, that can hide a little easier. And as Councilwoman McTiernan said, so perfectly, it's to change behavior. It's not to, you know, raise revenue or things like that, it's to change. And we want everybody to slow down. Everybody seems to be, they want to get to A to B as quick as they can with no one in their way, and sometimes we have to obviously enforce. So I definitely want to thank the foundation for this donation.
Thank you, Chief Weck.
Do we get a ride?
$23,000 a ride.
Thank you. I will say that, first of all, I'm a big fan of motorcycles. Second, thank you to the Reeves Foundation for this. And I think, you know, speeding and pedestrian safety is a big issue. That's the thing people bring up the most. And I know how hard you've been working on making the streets as safe as possible, and I think this will help that effort. So I'm very enthusiastic about this. Okay, so any other comments from council? No. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No one opposed to free, free money. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And now on to Works. It's Councilwoman Fox.
Okay, Works number one. This resolution authorizes the submission of a grant application for Greening Union County Grant, and it's offered through the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. And the grant initiative is a matching grant whereby the county will reimburse the city for 50% of the cost for the supply and installation of trees purchased directly by the city. The grant requests 80 trees to be planted in the spring of 2019. The value of the grant is anticipated to be $10,800, and if the grant is awarded, the matching funds would be included in the 2019 operating budget. The city has made use of this program in the past five years and has received over $38,000 in funding. And this grant allows the city to maintain its tree canopy and its designation as a Tree City USA. I enthusiastically move this resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fox. Do I hear any comments, any comments from members of council? I know that our tree canopy is a big issue, and I'm glad that we're taking steps to do it. Eighty trees, seems like we might need 800 trees, I think. Are we working on trying to get even more?
I think one of the issues is finding homes for all these trees, because they have to be on city right-of-ways or on parks, and we also are concerned about power lines and things like that. So if there's anything else you'd like to add?
To add Mr. Cascade, I know I bring this up all the time.
Yes, sure. Thank you, Council President Protam. We are, we always look for grants. We would love to receive more money for trees. As Councilwoman Fox mentioned, there are times where it's difficult to find homes, even though they're in the city right-of-way. As you know, the last large storms that we had, Sandy Irene, the October Storm, folks started really thinking about when these trees are removed, not having trees in front of their properties because of the power outages. But we'll continue to pursue locations. I think at one point, we're probably going to need to, since it is the city right-of-way, when we start losing more of the canopy, we're going to need to plant these trees in the city right-of-way, even if folks don't want to see them there, because you don't want to lose your canopy. It takes 60 years to have a nice canopy, so we want to continue to have, you know, succession growth going forward. So these are 80 trees. We will continue to look for funding, if we can, to even plant more. We can also purchase more, not through this grant program, but through others if we're successful.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cascade.
Sure.
I had one more question about, so this grant, this is just a grant, we don't know if we're going to get these 80 trees, or are we likely to get them?
So we participated, I would say, at least nine years in this program, and we've been successful all nine years in the amount that we've requested.
Oh, that's good news.
So we typically are around seven, you know, 60 to 80 trees a year.
That's great. And I noticed, because I did go into the types of trees we were getting, it was 10, 10 trees of eight different types, possibly.
Right.
Some of those are very exotic. I saw one is indigenous to the Middle East. Is that, how does that get chosen?
So, yeah, so our city forester has done a great job over the years in selecting species. We want to diversify the best we can. As I mentioned, I think it was the last meeting, we want to be sure that we have a diverse types of trees. So if a disease does hit, like the ash borer or Dutch elm back in the turn of the century, you don't lose all your trees. So he is very good at selecting street trees. We also use JC, we work with JCPN. So in locations where there are power lines, they have a guide that assists communities in planting trees that conform to wires. Because as you know, years ago, trees were put in locations, and the power companies just continued to add cables and lines and, and, you know, it's a chicken or the egg, the power companies are saying, "Well, you planted the wrong tree." We're saying, "No, we planted the right tree, but you added, you know, infrastructure." So we work along with the power company as well. So we select species that, that are conducive to wires, where they can prune them, and the tree doesn't look as an adult tree after they harshly prune it, doesn't look terrible. And in areas where we have no wires, we want to plant large shade trees. Your larger trees, your, you know, your maples, your oaks, and species of that nature. Our forester is very good at selecting street trees.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public? All those in favor?
I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry.
One quickie, very quick. I just noticed that we choose our own vendor, so you have the vendor that you use every year, or does the county?
So you can, and that's a great question. So there's two options. There is one that the county, you can use their vendor, because they go out and bid. We opt not to use their vendor for the supply and the planting of the tree. We go out for RFPs, and we'll select our own vendor. Some of the, we've had, we did use the one other option years ago, and we weren't very happy with it. Their vendor typically is up on Long Island. When we, if we receive this grant, what we do is we go out and mark our trees immediately. So we get to pick the best trees that are in the nursery. And they're pretty local, where otherwise, we'd have to go up to Long Island, and we've had some bait-and-switch experiences. So we choose the option where we select the supply vendor, we select the planting vendor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great, that's great. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilwoman Fox?
Thank you, Council President Protam. Works number two is to declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Public Works Division. And as we discussed in closed session, a maintenance worker in the Maintenance and Sewer Unit in the Department of Public Works will be retiring. This is an essential position, and I move that we authorize the city to declare a vacancy and fill this position.
Second.
Okay, any comments from council members? Any comments from the public? Well, as Councilwoman Fox said, we did discuss this at the closed session. Just want to say thank you to the employee who's retiring for his many years of excellent service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll take a moment. Sir, did you have something you want to discuss? No.
I'll just pay you to listen.
That's great. Thank you for being here. We just, everybody- We just, everybody else is.
Here for a reason.
Here every, every time. So we, oh, you missed the public comment, so I wanted to give you the chance. Okay.
I have one comment.
Yes.
All of you are looking at the texts that you're discussing. I don't have a text in front of me. When somebody mumbles, I can't understand what they're talking about.
Ah-ha.
They read very rapidly because this is familiar to them and they've been through it before and all of that. If you're a member of the general public and you come in, you can't understand most of what is being, I, some of the witnesses have been very good. But the council.
Okay, shut this down.
Good point.
I didn't want that comment.
Do me justice.
No, thank you for that, sir. We've taken pains actually to make it more intelligible.
Say it more clearly.
Yes, sir. Yes.
The other thing is that the agenda is available online, so you can see all of the documents that we're looking at.
I just have to wander in.
Right, of course. But if, you know, if you have an opportunity at some point, you can go online and, and read about anything that you want more information on.
Very good. I see Chief Weck gave him a agenda as well, so. Okay, moving along to buildings and grounds. Councilwoman Fox?
Okay, thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Buildings and grounds, one is a, this resolution authorizes the execution of an easement agreement for Ten Colony Court and the, between the city and the property owner. And on June 4th, 2018, the property owner received a land use board approval for the construction of a second-story addition at Ten Colony Court. A condition of the approval required the property owner to obtain authorization from council to allow the encroachment of a fence and a paver area onto city property. Memorial Field backs his house. So, and the reason that the fence, we believe the reason that the fence does encroach is because of a large tree. So when the fence was placed there by the previous owner, it was placed behind the tree. So the agreement acknowledges the encroachment and, and the property owner agrees to hold the city harmless from any liability associated with the encroachment. And he also has agreed that if the existing fence were damaged or removed, the paver area and any replacement fence would have to be placed in conformity with the property line. And this agreement will run with the land and be binding on, on future owners of the property as well. So I move this resolution.
Second. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Fox. Any comments from council on this issue or comments from the public? Which I stated very clearly, and we have.
I'm enunciating.
I'm trying to enunciate as well as like, it seems that this, this resident really did the right thing because they discovered, I imagine, that they were encroaching on city property when they did their addition, right?
It's when they saw the zoning board approval.
Right.
So it's a condition of the zoning board approval.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Buildings and grounds, number two.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. This is a similar kind of situation here. We are, we are authorizing the city to enter an agreement, authorizing an encroachment within the city's right-of-way. And this is for 36 Blackburn Place. And they have, and the property owners in December 2017 received a land use board approval for the construction of an addition. And one of the conditions required that the property owners obtain authorization to maintain arborvitae hedges within the city's right-of-way along Pine Grove Avenue. And the city forester, John Linsen, has visited the site and determined that the hedges are not in danger of any kind of road maintenance or snow and ice removal, and they don't create a site obstruction for drivers. So the, again, the agreement delineates the responsibilities of the, of both parties and the property owner is responsible for maintenance and we are also able to have access if we need to for any reason. So this agreement, again, will run with the land and is binding on later owners of the property. So I move this resolution.
Second. Okay, any comments from council or the general public? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. Okay, Buildings and grounds, number?
Three.
Three, please.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. This resolution authorizes the city submit, to submit a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the 2018 Transportation Alternative Set-aside Program. And this program provides grants for projects that promote alternate means of transportation. There's no financial match from the city of Summit for this project and the maximum funding request is a million dollars. The priority project for this grant will be to add sidewalks to portions of Morris Avenue between Lower Overlook Road and Denman Place and, and also on Broad Street between Upper Overlook Road and Ashwood Avenue. And this project will promote safety for pedestrians as they approach Overlook Hospital or also try to come from, from Broad Street to the downtown. So I think this is a great project. It's an area right now with, that has steep slopes on both sides because of its placement at Overlook Hospital, which makes it very treacherous if you find yourself walking and you end up on the wrong side of the street. So, so I move this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Any comments from council or questions? Yes, Councilwoman McTiernan?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. No, as Councilwoman Fox said, this is a dangerous area, you know, particularly down around, you know, Glenwood as that comes into, to Morris. And, you know, anyone who's tried to drive there or cross there knows it's very complicated and such. I mean, it could use some focus around walking, and I guess is a good way to say it. So I'm very supportive of this. Hopefully we could get this grant, would help us to do that. I would also say, though, it's, it's an interesting location because both of these do jive with the park line that connects those two. So I'm sure Aaron and team, when they look at this, if we get the grant, be able to maybe think creatively on how to connect that city asset to help move people in a, in a safe and efficient manner.
Thank you, Councilman McTiernan. Yes, Councilwoman Ogden?
No, I'm just, I would just add that I also am in support. We've been talking in safety, we've been, when, when I was on that, I've been talking about these sidewalks and just how dangerous they are. So this would be wonderful to get this grant, to do that project. That would be amazing. Now we will.
Yeah.
Fully support this.
My question is, there's no sidewalk there right now currently, right? Or there is a sidewalk, but it's in bad shape?
On one side.
On one side.
But what happens is you can find yourself walking down the, you know, the sidewalks end. So you find yourself at a point where you're on the wrong side of Broad Street or on the wrong side of Morris. And then you find yourself having to cross mid-block basically.
Or, or go backwards.
Yes.
Yeah.
People don't do that generally.
Right.
So it's, there is a sidewalk on one side, but that's really an area where we need it on both.
Understood. And are there any, there's no private properties there or are there? Normally when we put sidewalks in, part of the thing is that residents would have to, they have to pay something to get the sidewalks put in, right? But if we get this grant, does that mean we don't, that the residents don't have to pay?
That's, I think that's a question.
That's a deep question, but.
That's Mr. Cascase.
You hear what I said?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. So normally if you, we put sidewalks in, then residents have to pay for their portions.
Right.
But if we get this grant, does that mean they don't have to pay?
Right, they would not be assessed. So this, this funding would pay for that.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
And then we should look at, if we get denied the grant, we should look at putting sidewalks in this area anyway, right? If.
We are. So shortly, council will be presented with a sidewalk master plan.
Right.
Shortly. And it will identify priority locations. And then those locations, once council decides on the, or accept the locations, then we would have to, then going forward in the next five years, our capital funding mechanism would have to include those areas in there. So last year's capital budget, we did, at one point, we did include this section of Broad Street and Morris Avenue, if you could recall. And we removed it out at that time and only kept partial funding in there to actually do the study and to identify what we needed there. And now we're, the next step is now to apply for this grant. We're hoping that we can receive as much as a million dollars because it will be a costly project. As Councilwoman Fox stated, there are steep, it's pretty steep slopes there, so retaining laws have to be built. Utilities have to be moved that are closer to the road where the sidewalk will go. Right now, you have a network there of sidewalk that doesn't connect. So it does stop, as was mentioned, and we want to just connect that. And there is a lot of, it's in an area of a lot of conflict with, you know, vehicles and pedestrians and bicyclists. So this, this would be a great project.
Great. Well, thank you for doing it and I hope we get it.
Sure.
Okay, any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, last one, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Okay, Buildings and grounds, four. This resolution authorizes a professional services agreement with Marzidi Falcon LLP for professional legal services as a redevelopment attorney for the Broad Street West redevelopment area. The city issued a request for qualifications and received responses of qualification statements from three law firms for redevelopment council services. These three law firms submitted proposals providing their qualifications and experience and a committee made up of the mayor, members of council and the planning board interviewed the three candidates and are recommending that the city contract with Joseph Marzidi of the law firm of Marzidi Falcon. And this contract is not to exceed 12 months for professional services and is funded through the Department of Community Services Land Use and Planning Legal Services Budget. And it's in an amount not to exceed $50,000. $20,000 is in the current 2018 budget and the remaining 30,000 will be made available in the 2019 operating budget. I move that we, I move this resolution.
Second. Okay, any comments from council? Yes, Councilwoman Little?
I just want to say that I would enthusiastically support this. I know Attorney Marzidi, both as a resident of Summit, but I also was lucky enough to attend a talk that he gave at the American Planning Association this winter on redevelopment issues. He's extremely knowledgeable and thoughtful, really well-qualified and a terrific person. So what a great choice as our redevelopment attorney. So I was really happy to see that.
Yes, Councilman Tiernan?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. No, I would echo both of that. We, there were quite a few people who interviewed the three law firms and there was, it was unanimous consensus that Marzidi was head and shoulders the, the best choice for Summit. And this is important because as was mentioned earlier, we've just gotten all these developers in. The process in, on the West Broad Street redevelopment process is, if anything, is going to begin to speed up a little bit. So we need really good, sound legal advice. And given what we heard on our, as we went through the interview process, I feel very good that we're going to have that with this law firm.
Great, great. Any other comments from council or the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And that concludes our agenda. Onto the consent agenda now. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilwomen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good, good evening, everybody.